Welcome, everybody. It is Tuesday, June 9th, and we will open our meeting of the Millville Planning Board with roll call.
Jason Merely.
I'm Pam Maloney.
Justin Allen, virtually.
And we have Dylan Lindholm with us as well. And we have Jane from CMRPC has joined us as well. I'm going to take things a little bit out of order right now. Dylan, if it's all right, I think let's start with the ADU's discussion with the folks from CMRPC.
Yeah, that sounds great. I'll just give it right out to Jane if that's okay.
All right. Welcome, Jane.
Thank you for having me, and thank you for the Zoom option. I don't know if you got any of the handouts regarding the Affordable Housing Act that was passed last August by the state. Two sections of that act refer to accessory dwelling units, allowing them by right in the state with certain requirements. And it does allow communities to adopt ADU bylaws. In general, they're allowed to be up to 900 square feet or one-half the area of the primary dwelling on the site, whichever is less, depending on where the property is located from either a transit station or a bus stop. If it's within a half mile, no parking can be required. If it's more than a half mile, one parking space can be required. It does allow towns to have certain reasonable restrictions such as setbacks. It does allow site plan review, but that's... The regulations can't be more restrictive than what they would be for a single-family house. So it's kind of gray. If you don't require a site plan review for a single-family home, I don't know if that would be allowed for an ADU. We've been reading a lot of the reviews that the Attorney General's Office has been doing on ADU bylaws for other communities. But they're being very, very particular about every little bit of wording. Like, you can't say at least one parking space because that implies that the town might want to require more, and that's not in agreement with the regulations. So I don't know if... Does Dylan... Do you guys have a copy of the?
Not for them now. It's been a few months since I showed it to them, I think.
Okay, okay. Let me see if... I don't know if I have sharing capabilities or... Nope, I'm disabled. If you have it, Dylan, do you want to pull it up or?
Oh, it's like you're going to get access.
Yeah, hang on a second. Thank you. Jane, you should be able to share now.
Okay, let me try that. All right, too many documents open. I will find it. Here we go. Okay, so as far as... This is pretty much based on the model regulations and model bylaw that the State Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities came up with. And so as far as... Oh, I think I'm at the beginning. Not if I'm on C. Sorry about that. So we start out with a purpose and intent. And this community, I don't know if you don't have a quorum yet. If you can't vote on this, at least we can start talking about it and bring it back another night. But there's a lot of fill-in-the-blanks for the different town names, depending on which town we're working with and which section the bylaw will be numbered to fit in with your existing bylaws. You do not have to use all of these purpose statements, but you can use them, such as the purpose or intent would be to increase housing production, to develop small-scale infill housing, to provide more moderately priced housing, and to enable property owners to age and place, downsize, or earn supplemental income from investing in their properties. There are also several different definitions that are approved by the state. We would go through Millville's existing definitions in your bylaws to see which ones might need to be updated to be consistent with the state definitions or which ones are not included at all and maybe apply to the town and should be adopted. The first one is accessory dwelling unit. You know? Now that I look at this, it doesn't look like the definition that was approved by the state. So it might be the first part of it, and they had a couple of three-roman numeral-numbered statements at the end of it. It was much longer than this. But some of the other definitions that might be pertinent are design standards, if that's the case for Millville, what a dwelling unit is, the acronym for the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities, what is gross floor area. Are there historic districts in Millville?
No.
No, not yet. Okay, so that will not even apply. When EOHLC came out with their final regulations, they distinguished between a protected-use ADU, which is the one that's allowed by right, and a local ADU, which if a community wants to allow more than one or larger units, they can identify what they're going to allow besides the ones that are required by law. Definitions for a lot or a modular dwelling unit, pre-existing non-conforming structures of principal dwelling. And Dylan and I have reviewed a similar bylaw in another community where they were very particular about not using the term "single-family residence" because according to the way the state is interpreting it, they would be allowed on any lot that allows single-family residential zoning. But that could be a multifamily lot that has a tenement house on it or a duplex on it. So they have changed the terminology to principal dwelling because they don't want it to sound like it's restricting it only to lots that have a single-family dwelling, if that makes sense. Communities do have the option of whether they want to allow accessory dwelling units to be short-term rentals or not. I don't know how familiar you are with the laws that were passed in the state a few years ago on short-term rentals, or if you have a bylaw for that.
We do not.
You do?
We do not have a bylaw related to this yet.
Okay, thank you. If I could just explain quickly, what the law says is that anybody who has a short-term rental, which is more commonly known as HomeAway, Airbnb, Verbo, some of those other companies where you can rent out your property on a short-term basis for a fee, and the reservations are made in advance online usually, anyone who is operating one is required to register with the State Department of Revenue and to charge a 5.7% occupancy tax. But it also allows communities to adopt a short-term rental bylaw and to charge up to a 6% local occupancy tax. And if there is an owner or entity that has more than one unit within the town, you can charge also up to 3% for a community impact fee because of all of the additional administrative work for... and inspections for administering all of these licenses or permits for short-term rentals. Some communities do not want to let their ADUs be short-term rentals. Others do. Some of our very rural towns out in the western part of the county, who have very little business or little commercial tax revenue, really favor it because it would be some type of tax revenue coming into the town. So it's a decision that each town can make. Definition for a single-family residential dwelling unit and zoning district. Many of these transit station definitions will not apply. You're not in MBTA community. I don't even know if there's any bus service at all in Millville. So if these do not apply, we can remove bus station, subway station, commuter rail, and ferry terminal. And those are just dependent on what each community has. Is there any bus service at all?
No.
Okay, then we can get rid of those.
You want to help us find one?
One that crosses the state line? Or... Because I know there's one that comes into one socket, but I don't know where your residents would be traveling to. So some of the general provisions in ADU shall maintain a separate entrance, whether that's from the outside or an internal hallway, either is fine. And that the ADU construction shall comply with the State Environmental Code Title V regulations for a single-family residential dwelling. And see, I'm going to have to change this single-family stuff, probably, just because of how particular they've been about the language. You'd have the language about whether the town does or does not want to allow short-term rentals in ADUs. We would need to know particular information about the town, such as would it be the building official or the zoning enforcement officer or some other position that would oversee building permits for it, what the correct terminology is in your town. So the standard dimensional regulations that are allowed under the laws, as I mentioned, up to 900 square feet or one-half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is less. On a lot with a single-family residential dwelling unit, that has to change to principal dwelling in case a lot has a duplex or some other triplex or a tenement home on it. And then we will need to research the different sections of your bylaw that cover dimensional standards and accessory structures and make sure both the section numbers and the terminology, the names for those sections are correct. So a protected-use ADU on a lot with a principal dwelling that is not a single-family residential dwelling unit shall have not have more restrictive dimensional standards than those for the principal dwelling, as I mentioned earlier. As far as the parking requirement goes, without any transit there, only one parking space can be required for the protected-use ADU. They are allowed by right. However, if someone wants more than one or one that's larger than 900 square feet, then you can require a special permit. And is the zoning board of appeals your special permit granting authority or planning board?
Our planning board is.
Planning board, okay. So we'll have to add that in there. With all other requirements, some towns are allowing up to 1,200 square feet for a larger unit. And that might... I think we also want to look into how many existing accessory apartments or dwelling units you have in town. We don't want to create something where somebody would be non-conforming. So we might want to think about what that number might be if the town wants to allow anything larger than the 900 square feet. And then we'll look at the existing dimensional standards and make sure that what we apply to a principal dwelling is also the same for the accessory unit. Again, special permit for multiple ADUs on a lot. And it seems like there have been a lot of comments coming up from the state about non-conforming uses or structures. So we'll have to take a careful look at that. And then administration and enforcement, identifying who's going to administer it, who's going to issue the building permit that the CFO has required before occupancy, and then apply the Dover analysis because this is a protected use under Section 3 of the Zoning Act. I've been seeing a lot of comments about that, too. If there's anything in the bylaw that makes it look like it's becoming a discretionary approval, they're gonna point that out and want to make sure that there's neutral language in there that is not... Does not make it discretionary. That was it.
All right.
So those are some of the things as we work through this. We'll want to think about what kind of decisions the planning board wants to make on this, and we can customize the bylaw to meet the town's needs as long as it's within the state law requirements.
And what I can do with Jane is maybe meet off after the meeting and fill in just the basics that, you know, we don't need any decisions on. And then we can just bring what sort of questions that we need your input from before town meeting, and then go to town meeting.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. I think if you guys could fill in those pieces that are just like things that happened in our town and then the corrected language on those few things that you mentioned that maybe doesn't have the correct language and circulate a copy of that to us, Dylan, so that we can see clearly the things that we need to make the decision on. The group can have some time over the next two weeks to kind of read it through, and we can put on the agenda for our next meeting to discuss those specific things and hopefully come to some decisions.
That sounds perfect. So I should have mentioned at the beginning that this is funded by District Local Technical Assistance. We got funding through that program to help several different communities in the CMRPC region to try to come into compliance with the latest legal requirements in the state. And it just has to be finished by December 31st. So we've got plenty of time to work on it.
Good. Well, the faster we get it done, the quicker we can look at something else, too. So I don't want to drag our feet on this one.
Very good, very good.
Especially if somebody else is doing the work.
Yeah, exactly. We have somebody to help advise us. I mean, the things you brought up, I can tell you. I think that there'll be some discussion around the short-term rental piece of that. I know we've kind of had some, like, hints of conversations as a board around that before. And I think we did talk before about whether or not we saw any reason to look at increasing the square footage of the ADU. And I think we kind of, at the time, had decided no. So I'm not sure. There's a lot of discussion on that one. But certainly, the short-term rental piece will be good. And which definitions to include, Dylan, maybe you can cross-reference that with whatever we have and figure out. It looked like a lot of those we don't have, though, so.
Yeah.
Are any of the towns allowed to restrict the use? Or is the Mass Law just basically not make that a decision?
You cannot require that it be a familial relationship of the person who's renting it. You cannot have any income restrictions or rent restrictions for affordability.
You can restrict short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we can restrict whether or not we allow for it to be bigger.
My... The only reason I ask is I thought this might have been brought up as a common sense answer for relatives. But it sounds like it's also to increase housing availability as well, so that's why I asked.
That's the... Yeah, that's the main purpose, is just to get more housing units on the market.
Yep.
Without having to expand infrastructure other than whether your septic system is large enough to accommodate that extra bedroom or two, whatever's in the unit.
Yep.
What about tax rates? I'm trying to... I'm just thinking what the tax revenue would be from these additional properties if it would offset if somebody had a kid in the school system. So that's...
Especially if they increase their square footage, I assume.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if they increase their property size, there'd be something.
I wasn't sure. Because it has an ADU, if it would... It would increase the value enough to offset some of the, you know...
I don't know all the calculations that the assessors make.
I didn't know if this... I didn't know if this prevented you from having a higher tax rate or because it's an ADU, how much will it increase the property values?
I think it would probably go along with whatever a duplex or a triplex rents for. You know, what the assessments are for those. And then, of course, brand-new ones.
They should have no restrictions on that, on this, that the town could either agree to or not agree to.
I don't think so.
We did have a question from an assessor at another town who said, "How do I assess this? It's not a primary dwelling. It's not a second home." And I had sent several questions to the state because there weren't clear answers on a lot of these things. And their response was, "Check with your legal counsel."
In other words, you pay for it. No, I just think that, like you said, if it's not a different way of assessing, because you don't know what to call it, just adding a bedroom and some square footage on a house won't offset or won't increase the tax revenue for what the person or the people renting may cost the town to educate them, stuff like that, you know?
One other thing that came out in the final regulations that the state put out in March was whether or not a town wanted to give the ability for an ADU to be sold, say, as like a condo unit. And I've seen several questions about that in online forums. So some of the bylaws, draft bylaws, are including language about that. I don't know if that's a consideration at all in Millville.
Or if it was going to be treated like, you know, a 55-plus dwelling, you know?
You can't restrict the age either.
So, there you go.
Yeah. Thank you for reminding me of that one.
Worth a shot.
Yeah. So, yeah, Dylan and I will get together either this week or... I don't know. You're off this week, next week.
I'm around. Yeah, I'll be around.
You sure? Okay. We can find a time to go work through that and bring back a clean copy to you. I don't know when your next meeting is or if it's just once a month.
Twice. But, yeah, I'll work with Jane. We'll make sure we have a draft. And I'll put it back on the agenda whenever we have a little time, if it's next meeting or the meeting after.
Perfect.
Sounds like I'll be around.
Yep.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good evening, all, and we'll be seeing you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jane.
You, too. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
We did... Pam Williams came in the middle of that, just for the record. And I'm going to go back. And I know Dylan did send out the minutes for the May 6th meeting ahead of this. I don't know if everyone had a moment to take a look at those and if we want to vote to approve them. Or if you haven't had a chance to look at, we could table that to next week or next meeting.
I just got it today, and I didn't look at it.
Okay.
I think I sent it like a while back, and so I actually sent it today.
I looked at it.
I don't remember. Yeah, we can do it next time.
I didn't print that one out.
No.
Yeah, we'll just move it to next time. We'll do those. All right, we have a special permit hearing for 50 to 56 Main Street. Just to be clear, Dylan, this is the special permit. This is not the same one that we did last time. This is a different purpose.
Yes.
All right, come on up, Roland.
And I want to make sure, because it wasn't super clear last time, can we just make sure Roland says that he's recusing himself because he is technically the associate member?
Okay.
I am recusing myself. That's me.
Yep. All right, welcome back. Tell us what you have going on.
So this is the... For the construction, right? That's what we're doing right now, right? Not the auto, right?
The auto was already done.
Auto's already done, yep.
So what happened was, basically, as we know, the permit, special permit for keeping equipment, contracting yard, and so forth was done several years ago. From my understanding, I spoke with my attorney. I seen his emails. He was unable to make it tonight. At that time, if I recall, I could be wrong, I know Jack Hunter had sent him... Sent him, "It's a 20-day grace period. The town will record at that." We have that email. And then we did nothing after that. He's never... He requested but never received a signed paper so that he could record from his thing. So I don't know where it happened. I know Jack, I think it may be around that time, was exiting. So I don't know, maybe if the... It just got not finished signed or not, or what happened. So I didn't know if the town even had a signed copy, you know, because I know they said they didn't.
I think Dylan was looking for it, but I don't know.
Yeah, all I could find was an email with the near-final draft.
So I assume somewhere along the line, it kind of just got, like, lost and didn't really get finished. So we thought we were all set, obviously. So I guess we're here back again to present again and go over the special permit again, which I think you guys have all the...
No.
No, sorry.
I have a couple extras, so I think I have enough for all you guys, actually. So let me just grab those that I get.
I'll pull up the screen here, look.
Thanks, Dylan.
Are you pulling up the screen?
Yeah, if you have one or you want to pass it around.
I need one, but I have one extra, I think, right there. Actually, that's... Sorry. She's going to pull it on the screen, right, too?
Yep.
So I can work off the screen, too?
You can have this. I just... This all matches what's on.
Okay.
That's all. I just wanted to double-check it.
Is this one here the same thing?
It's from the original.
Yeah, okay. All right, so give us, just for anyone watching this later, give us a verbal description of what it is that you're looking to have permitted.
Okay, so basically, contracting and business equipment storage. So what we're looking to do, basically, is what we have on the plan. If you look at the plan on the front page here, I have them... Actually, I prepared this for you guys to get a visual of the whole site, actual what is happening there now. So these are actually pictures from yesterday, a week ago, maybe? If you just want to take a peek at these so you can kind of see.
So is this a new permit or are we trying to resubmit the previous special permit?
Resubmitting the previous?
Yep.
All right, so the description of use was different in the previous?
Yeah, probably was. I didn't have the exact thing, but I tried putting together as close as I could what it was.
This is different.
Oh, because that?
This is different.
This is the decision on the auto sale.
Yep, that's that.
Oh, yeah, that's different, yeah.
But the original... The original one was for refinishing dumpsters.
No, it was contracting and doing all that.
There was a... Yeah, there was some of that. But that's why I'm asking. Are we going off of what was here?
I think for now, we have to go off of what he's submitting to us now, as long as it's what Dylan has. It's basically like the first one didn't happen at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, keep going.
An idea. I kind of numbered them. Photos are in line. All right, thanks. So I can just describe it as the pictures real quick so you guys can kind of see. What I brought in. So the first is to give you an idea of the numbered pictures. So number one is a street view, which we applied for and applying for again, obviously, for storage of equipment there, boxes, containers, and so forth with that. Picture two is that same frontage, which we're putting the car lot. We'll be looking to put the car lot instead, remove the equipment out of there. Picture three is driving up the driveway on the side of the garage where we have a couple vehicles parked, a dumpster for repair, and that's just our lot that we put, you know, pull up, park cars, whatever it is that is there. Not much goes on there. This is a... Four, we'll be looking from the garage into the yard. So you got right there, that's our parking facility. These are employee parkings on the left right now. Park our trucks right there, straight ahead, as you can see. There's a dumpster there and a flatbed that's there that needs repairs.
Maybe someone left? Oh, okay.
Then... Picture five is on the right of the property, which this wasn't on the special permit, but I'm going up the property to show you, too. On the left, that's a flat spot there, which we have pre-cutting stuff. It's just storage for trucks, equipment as well that we had put there. Six and seven, as soon as you pass that, that's an area that we cleaned up. That was the... There was a dilapidated motor home or whatever you want to call it, modular home that was there. So we cleaned that all up to get that out of there. Then the picture seven, which is right after that, is just a top view. Then the picture seven, which is right after that, is a just a top view. Not a side view, the area where the home was um that was cleaned up. And last picture is number eight, that's from basically standing at the garage at my back, looking forward. That's in the original plan of our yard, where we keep our trucks and the equipment, dumpsters and so forth. So it just gives you an idea of the state of what everything is looking like, basically, generally, usually. And I got a bunch of extra ones I made, just in case I can leave them for anybody else that needs them.
Yeah, can I ask for a digital copy of those?
Yeah, on a thumb drive, right?
Yeah, just email, email me the photos you have later.
There's a picture with. Is there a firewood business being run up there?
That's a tree company that we work with and they um. We allowed them to put some stuff there that wasn't on the original area here, so that's why we were actually on the. You guys don't have that, it's gonna be on the screen and I gave you two copies, we're actually a- asking to allow, I guess, basically this to be included, right? These two spots for permanent of storage uh equipment type stuff as well, cause they're open lots.
See, those definitions are very broad. It turns into like almost anything like the front, the front of the street. You know, you got boats, boats aren't, are those equipment? I mean, obviously, very.
It was storage.
If I look at the original decision. Two hundred containers. Twelve pieces of machinery and seven loader, seven service and loader trucks. And is is this gotten larger in scope? I don't see any limitations or headcount on pieces of equipment. And like I said, that front. Those containers were were allowed in the front on the last permit?
It was told that we were gonna put containers there, yeah. Proposed gravel area proposed.
So where would you, I know this is secondary special permit, but where is the car lot intended?
Right where that is, that's all. Number.
Two, right?
Yeah, number two.
So that's what this is now?
Yeah, that's all gonna be.
What I, what I think we're looking to ensure is that. We're not permitting, there there's nothing in the permit language that's gonna allow it to be like this, like. Now.
So do you feel like the property now is compliant with what you thought you had as a special permit? Or do you think you'd be out of compliance with what you have there now?
No, I think it's a compliance, I except for I I will say in the front here, yeah, that's probably a little bit more, obviously, the boat, obviously. Yes, I get that and stuff like that.
In the firewood, cause that's.
Yeah, the firewood, yep, that side was not even um addressed on the first one.
Or this one? Like whose fire, is that yours?
It's yeah, mine and the guys, yeah.
I mean, the guys, I'm sorry. This, so now a friend of yours is storing. We don't know if that's out of state firewood, do we?
No, it's it's Massachusetts.
How do we know, like the firewood companies have certain restrictions? Do you have a permit to run that out of the?
I don't, no.
Does he?
Uh I do not know.
See, I'm not trying to be difficult, this is just stuff that I didn't, I wasn't aware that that was up there. And having driven by the property in a while and they didn't know, like you said, equipment storage. You have boats, you have trucks, abandoned, you know, it looks. It just doesn't look like this, the pictures you're showing. Would be in compliance with the previous permit.
So. With the area that the special permit covers, I don't understand, I mean, I see the front where you're saying boats, yes, yes. And that equipment, some of it is a little bit different, obviously, right? But other than that, I don't see why nothing else is in compliance.
No, I didn't say nothing else. I asked you if you thought you were in complete compliance with the. What'd you say?
I said yes, but I was trying to say, you know.
Okay. I I don't wanna be steering the ship here either, if 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 anybody else has a question about it.
Uh my question would be, I know you've made lots of copies for us to pass out to. All the other department heads, Dylan, do we know if that's been passed around, if we've heard anything back?
Yeah, um so the building commissioner has some concerns about um potential violations that I know he's looking into. And so I know he wants to um, he wants to look into that before the planning board makes a decision. There's also concerns from the town administrator, probably from um concerns from the building commissioner. So I think before a decision is made, we want to make sure that everything is in compliance, that the building commissioner is satisfied.
Of course, and then um my question for you would be. And Dylan, thank you for pulling this up on the screen, this was the language that was in the original. So I have a couple of questions about this, one, I just noticed that the hours are different, so I um. It's actually a little bit less, this is permitted from six to seven and I think you said six to six, which is fine. Um the the equipment, so we we did. Call out some very specific equipment, no more than two hundred containers, no more than twelve pieces of machinery, no more than seven service and loader trucks. Having this conversation and what you're envisioning and your opportunity to make this true, is that still accurate?
We still have that up there, yes. There isn't as many right now, I mean, as what's.
But this is what you're envisioning.
And we're also, so I also want to add to it, like I said, seeing if we can be allowed to. Use this other two areas which are highlighted on the, I think you guys. To do then, if if that was a issue with having the stuff there with him, but the thing, can we do a um, can we? Sublease to like a professional company like.
These are all pieces of your property though that were included in the original request?
Yes, except for um.
And what is it that you're looking to do with those extra two sections that are different or beyond?
Sublease those two areas out to other companies that are going to be like a professional company, like like cleaning, you know, like what we had there right now. You know, and then obviously, it would be up to them, obviously, to come to the town, obviously, apply for a permit, obviously like that, we just wanna have the ability to. Be able to sublease space to a company that is um, you know, within, you know, a professional company, not having like um. A little bit of a mess we have.
So now that's new on this application?
That is, yeah.
But was that ever written up in the previous?
That was definitely not there.
But there's someone on your property doing that now?
Right, I was doing some business with him, working with him, that's why I I put him there.
Six and seven, so what what's on these? These now, that's that's where the firewood was?
Sorry, number five.
Number five.
Number five.
So there's nothing on these, your goal would be like clean this up, there would be nothing on those. Pieces of land until you brought somebody in, like another business.
To sublease like their contracting equipment there or whatever type of stuff they have, basically, and obviously, at that point. They'd be responsible to go to the town for their own far as business license and so forth and whatever they need.
Yeah, I think um because this is a special permit and not. A site plan review and Dylan, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we need to look at what you're looking to be permitted for for your part. And you'd have to come back for a site plan review. For doing something different with the other parts of your property, is that correct, Dylan?
You wouldn't use a special permit for probably all of it. If there are businesses that require a special permit.
But the, but for Roland, would he have to have his site plan looked at to say that it was okay for him? Like, cause you wouldn't, he wouldn't come back for another special permit, his renter would come back for the special permit?
Right. Yeah, the site plan, I think should be considered as part of the special permit, I don't think he needs a separate site plan review per se. It should be just part of the special permit process.
So would that, alright, so I'm gonna go, so I make sure I understand, so like. That wouldn't be covered under the special permit to conduct business in uh the same thing like business um and contracting equipment?
I think, I think I would wanna make sure your your site plan was clear about. Something is happening on this side and you're responsible for this, and something's happening on this side and you're not responsible for that, that's what I would wanna make sure is clear.
So that, so if I, if you guys gave it to me as far as like those two sides, I'd be responsible for that, basically, when we wanna make the person.
Businesses on this side of things.
Okay, I I got.
Does that make sense? And I'm sure Dylan probably makes more sense of this than I am right now, but we can write that into the decision. Alright, and you said we've only heard back from the building inspector and the town administrator, so there's a couple other folks that have need to look at this before. We haven't heard, a couple of folks we haven't heard from yet, still.
I think um so. The last time that this went around um twenty twenty-one, I think. There was way in from, I think, a lot of the departments with some questions, and I think Peter is really responding for. The whole situation is that there were a lot of concerns last time and and uh he wants to make sure those concerns are satisfied this time. So yeah, it would be great if we can um look into all of that before making some sort of decision on this.
And and has our building inspector commissioner been in touch with you?
Actually, I called him and I had him come down last week and we went through. I called him, I said, I want you to come down, take a look at everything, so we have an understanding of everything and you can tell me what you need or what it is. We walked the entire property, um you know, and he said, okay, I'm gonna, and then I talked to him on the phone a co- a day or two later. Um just curious about a couple of things and he said, yeah, I'm just pulling your permit and I'm gonna be looking into it and we'll get, I'll get back to you, but I mean. Overall, I asked him, I says, what am I, I get what you're saying, certain things, I says, but in reality, it's like, what is the? The compliance, it's it's like, I'm not like it's. Out of scope of craziness, you know, it's still contracting equipment, it's not like I brought in a pot factory, you know, I mean. It's like, we're trying to, I've cleaned up the area, like I've showed him, I says, there's junk there, I can show you scrap uh metal shards. Tires, junk, I mean, the whole areas, the whole thing when you drive by the street looks a hundred times better than what it was, you know, so we're just trying to actually improve. Keep the business rolling, yes, we do have a couple of things out of scope once in a while, I get it, I and I I understand it, but it's like. It's not detrimental to anything, like we have two trucks in the yard, I told Joe, I said, there's another two trucks right here coming in. Those trucks, we're looking to put in service, so we're bringing them in, we're waiting, we're gonna send them, one already went to beam. Uh body, so you know, I said, this thing's happening, that's part of our business, you know, and then now, new equipment, not new equipment, it's it just, it's part of it, you know? Um and like I said, I just uh, so I walked the whole thing, I called him and and he came down and looked at everything, you know, and um. You know, and just waiting to hear back from him, you know, uh I'm I'm sure if it was something that was so. That bad that he would have said, hey. This is gonna stop me right here now, you know, so I mean.
Some concerns to us and ask for a little bit more time, then we wanna give him the time to kinda work through that piece of it and and I'm sure whatever. He comes up with or you guys come up with, we'll we'll probably be just writing into the conditions.
That's why I called him, I said, I want you to look at this, I wanna be here with you to explain it and if you have questions, understand everything, what's going on, what we did. Uh you know, and um he did say, you know, like uh this this should have been, I should have been told about this, you should have called me and I said, alright, I do apologize, I didn't realize that that was gonna be. A concern or whatever, um and I said, I, you just let me know what we need to do to make it right or whatever you need me to do. Um and that was our last off and I know I'd spoke to him two days later or something like that, after that talk and um he said he was pulling a special permit to look at it and go. And whatever, and then um we we talked more, because we also have um colonial engineering. Um Steve Dexter um working on it, I they've already sited the land, they've done all that work with the tripods and all that. Because uh my next step also was, I wanted to come to the board and uh approach, just like, this is a little bit, I guess, but like. If you look at um lot five dash six, the wa- the wall part area that's cleared where the house was. That's in the area, we would like to put a building there, you know, our contractor type base. And then if you look at picture, I think number eight, the last picture. Um looking forward like that on the left side where my trucks are. We would like to, and he's doing the site plan and all that for everything, I told Joe, we'd like to put a building along that line, you know? Another um contractor type bay, you know, and bring that in, and that would be, you know, sort of be looking to rent those out. Whether it be for storage or whatever you wanna put in there, or whether it be like, you know, um. A H VAC company comes in and they use it for storage of their stuff or whatever, you know, um that's what we're looking to present. In short time, Steve, I think just got back from vacation, I haven't heard from him, I know he's really busy, but um I did tell Joe that that's in the works. So there, he's, I know he's working on that as well. But that's just an idea of like where we're trying to project with everything going and try to get it to be something, I mean, you know, I mean. The land's there, I mean, I'm trying to A, make some more money, B, utilize it, make it what we can with it, you know, and. And grow.
Does anybody else have any questions for Roland?
No, uh uh no questions, just. I think if you if you wanna get past any of that, getting into compliance and making Joe happy. Is there a building up there now that was, is there a new building?
So what happened was on the side of the garage, we had um, we had a um like a temporary office, so that kinda just was like, eh, it was old and it just wasn't right. So we I ended up building like a shed on blocks and we, it is a little bit bigger than what I I said, he said, measured, he says, it's a little bit bigger than what you need. He goes, and you should have po- called me on this for a permit, I said, well, I thought it was on blocks, I thought it'd be alright, so that's one of the things, I said, well, you tell me what I need to do. Whatever we need to do to rectify that, that's.
It's gonna be better if you ask permission instead of figuring this out, it's just. I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to be open, you've been on the board, you've. You know, we we gotta do it right.
Right, no, I understand, so yeah, but then again, I'm not, I wouldn't have called into my property, went over everything, tried to like, I said, listen, this is what we got, what we're going on, I'm trying to make it right too. You know, and I'm just trying to say it and, you know, also like, I mean, I get that the, you know, the the twelve machinery, whatever. If I go there one day and I bring in a piece of machinery and I got thirteen there for two, three days or a month for thing, now I'm.
But wasn't that part of the the original permit application, is that you need, you wanted to store ten, but you'd. Ask for twelve for that situation?
Well, we're starting fresh, so I think if this is the type of stuff you guys are anticipating, I would, I would request that if you have the space. And then get the special permit for what you anticipate needing, so that you're not coming back and then you're not. Go for what you need. Figure out what that is and what's gonna be okay with him and then then work with us, I I appreciate that you're trying to do everything to be, to do it right, but let's. You got a second chance at this, so let's do it right.
Yeah, that's fine, perfect.
In the, you know, commercial condos is what I always knew them as is. It's a good business. But then you're gonna have to police them to stay within what you asked for on the special permit.
So now how does that work, is something, what do you mean by police them as like that, like so if I?
It's in part of your special permit, you need to make sure they're compliant.
And they have to stay within your book, if it's your property, they have to stay in compliance with what you asked for in your permit, on your property.
Right, right, right.
They're in equipment place? And you go past your requested equipment? Now you're out of compliance, they're not, they're your tenant, so it's you. Really, I promise I'm not banging on you, but like that wood, that firewood business, I know, I don't know if there's any restrictions, but I know you can't bring. Massachusetts firewood into New Hampshire. Because we have pest problems.
Different species and stuff, yeah.
But this, how do we know that firewood doesn't have beetles?
Right, I see what you're saying, yeah.
So it's like, so now this guy's using your property.
For me, cause it's under my permit, right, okay.
It's your house.
So now. He would have to ha- go for this by himself, obviously.
Think you have to get permission to, uh it's not a subdivision, but you have to get permission to rent your property. Yeah, I'm not sure how that works, but that's what you ha- you have, otherwise it's on you.
Right, right, so you guys, you don't know how the steps to go through?
That's a Dylan question.
Uh yeah, I need to do some research, I also have a call into our town council to make sure that we do this permit properly. Um so I can ask him about that as well, if that's okay with everyone.
May as well go, if you've got this vision.
And just do it all in one.
Board approve you if you're out of compliance. Just want, I want you to succeed.
Yeah, 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 no, I I understand what you're saying, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Just I think you work with Joe, cause. Whatever he needs and then I I agree with.
So would Joe be the one to call to ask him about far as like uh my buddy doing that?
It's not gonna be your buddy anymore, cause you don't wanna kill him.
Right, 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 right. Right, no, I understand, no, that's fine.
Alright, so, um, I think we're clear here, you'll work with Dylan on some of the pieces about what you're looking to use the property for. You're gonna work with Joe to get him comfortable with what you have before us. We will look to, um, uh. Continue this meeting, maybe, maybe, I don't know, if two weeks is probably not long enough, Dylan, but maybe next. Two meetings from now, we can, we can get this back on.
And not too, uh, serious, but I'm seeing chemical storage, I'm seeing a big ass oil tank or fuel tank.
Yeah, we went through the fire department and got a permit for all that.
That's all permitted?
Yes, that's, and that's why on the, on the tank there, you, um, you can't block away, but like, they had a fire department came down.
Oh, no, if it's permitted in the fire department, I got no issue.
Even like the de- the def system, the def there, not hazardous, but he made us put like, uh, just right, black marker, non-hazardous. Def, you know, so that was all permitted, yes.
That's cool, that's.
Any permits you have, any papers will be helpful.
I'm sorry?
Any papers.
Yep.
Permits you have, like from fire department, if you add that in, that'll be great.
Yeah, not a problem.
Pack it, like, we're emailing it to her.
So next meeting, I'll have, I, I believe it's stapled on our wall, when you first walk in with the business license and all that stuff.
Take some pictures and send them to Dylan.
Give us everything, yeah.
Okay, not a problem, we'll do.
Alright, um, so we'll work Dylan for their continuance date, do we need to make a motion for that?
Yeah, so your next meeting is the twenty-third, and the one after that, I think it's July fourteenth.
So let's go with July fourteenth, um, I think, I think you're gonna need more than two weeks, so. Let's, I'll hear a motion to continue this special permit hearing to July fourteenth at six P M. Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Justin?
Justin Allen, aye.
Alright. Alright, awesome.
Um, Dylan, I will leave, you want these extras of the pictures I left for them that they were looking at?
Yeah, so we can put them on my desk, it'd be great. And if you can send me a copy by email, that'll be fantastic.
Yeah, I'm gonna send you a copy of that, I'm gonna get together the, uh, the stuff that you wanted from the office as far as like the, uh, the permitting for fire. Not a problem.
And can we make sure that he gets a copy of the signed, uh, permit, it should be on your desk, man? The original, uh, auto dealer permit? I have it here, okay, can we have a signature from whoever voted on it?
Where does that go after that? Does that?
That goes to, uh, the clerk, the town clerk will take it, and then in twenty days.
So what lots, what lots is that approving?
Just that front one where the boat is.
Is it?
It's the picture, uh.
Is it stated that way though, in the permit, so it's number two?
Well, I didn't lot number them, I just did that on my.
No, 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 I just mean for. Did the decision list restrictions on what part of the property?
Um, it, I think it says, based on the site plan that he gave us, which I can connect, you know, attach it to the back of it.
Yeah, let's do that.
Do that, and then I'll sign it, or I'll sign it, because it'll do that.
Okay. Awesome.
Do you wanna take these for Dylan?
Yeah, I'll put them on our desk, you can just leave it there, I'll grab it.
Thanks.
Alright, Dylan, um, planners report, do you have anything?
Nope, um, I think, thing I had was C M R P C, but I put it as a separate item, so that was sort of my, my big presentation, was with Jane.
Awesome, so our next meeting is the, I'm sorry, can you remind me the June date?
Twenty-third.
June twenty-third at six P M, our hearing with you will be continued till July fourteenth at six P M. Does anybody have any other questions, things you wanna talk, talk about tonight? Alright.
I don't think there was anything, yes, uh, Dylan, selectmen's meeting, the couple. That were making basically a public complaint.
Oh, that the planning board wasn't helping them, but they were really looking for the zoning board members.
Yeah, um, I think I know who that would be, and it, I assume it's the people I've been talking to for a while, uh, we were trying to get in touch with Z B A.
I should, uh, let me, I, I shouldn't call that a complaint, I, I used the wrong language there, it wasn't a complaint, they just went to the. I think the nearest meeting to get some attention, so forgive me for that.
Do they need to speak with, um, zoning, cause I know it was kind of implied that night that maybe we could help her.
Yeah, so it sounds like the situation was, there were multiple options for them to move forward, and Z B A seemed like the best option at the time. Um, we did get in touch with, um, the Z B A, and it looks like they're gonna go with a different option, which will be us. So, as of last week, um, they should be coming to us, I think, so I will, I'll reach out to them, uh, um. To see if that's their final decision, I know the, um, chair of the Z B A was gonna tell them. You know, give his recommendation that they go through planning instead of Z B A.
So do they, did they submit site plans and plans, or?
Nothing yet, because they, they were just trying to decide how to move forward, they, they have some property, they wanted to build a duplex or. Two houses on each property, or one house on, you know, two families, so they were trying to decide what the best move was, they had some issues with, um. The fact that their road is, um, not accepted, and the frontage, they don't have enough frontage. And there was a mix-up on their, um, zoning district, so they had a, a lot of like little things going on there. I said, you should probably get a variance for the frontage, but then it turns out, maybe if we just combine the two properties and they have all the frontage they need. And they'd be comfortable with that, so it looks like they wanna come for a two-family house, I believe.
Are they working with anybody?
And that would come through planning instead of going through the Z B A to get the frontage variance.
Are they working with an engineering firm or anybody?
I assume they were sort of waiting to see what their process was to move forward first, um, before spending the money. So, you know, they haven't applied for anything yet, it was just sort of discussions, and they just needed an answer of like, where they wanted to, how, how to move forward. So we were just trying to help them with that, um, so I'll reach out and say, now is probably the time to get an engineering helped.
Yeah. Alright, thank you, that was all I had.
Alright, motion to close the meeting?
Make that motion.
Second.
It's always my favorite one.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Justin?
Aye.
Aye, have a wonderful night, everyone.
Good night.